Councilman Randy Roberts will not be here tonight. Can I get a motion to excuse?
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Roberts.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion to excuse by Councilman Hicks, second by Terrence Benson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Councilman Roberts is excused. Councilman Hicks, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Sir. Dear Father, thank you for today. Thank you for bringing us together. Just watch over Mr. Roberts and pray for him and his families. He's trying to get well so he can join us again. Just let us make the right decisions and have the good discussions, the discussions that need be made over our city and about our city to move forward in our next year. And watch over our first responders and watch over our military personnel. In these things we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Presentation on the City Manager's proposed financial year 25 budget in advance of discussion action on August 13th. Mr. Reed.
Mayor, Council, good evening, and thank you for being here at this special meeting. We are streaming this meeting and recording this meeting since it's a regular, not a regular meeting, but a special meeting. Of course, we don't do that for our budget workshop. So with that being said, me, there we are. There's the PowerPoint. Mayor, Council, this is a PowerPoint that was included in your August 13th packet, but tonight you're laser focused on the budget and you have three items all related to the budget. I thought you might like me just to go ahead and give this presentation tonight and maybe on August 13th because it's a regular meeting. You have a lot of other items. You might say, Mr. Reed, you gave us that presentation on the 8th. You can skip that tonight and you might just have some questions for me. However, if you'd enjoy a second or a rerun of the presentation on August 13th, all you have to do is say, why don't you give that full presentation again? In addition to me wanting to thank each and every member of the council for the hard work that you've put in, in this budget process, you've attended three mini-budget workshops to date. You've had three full-budget workshops. And of course, even at regular meetings, you've had to give us direction on budget-related items. So I want to thank you for that leadership that you've given during this budget process. I also want to thank the, every member of the executive team, many of them, not all of them, but many of them sitting in this room tonight. And I want to thank you for stepping up and being available, providing the information that we've needed on a timely basis. City council's heard me say this, but budget is a team sport and takes shared leadership for us to be at the point we are tonight. So I want to thank everyone. Since Tuesday, July 30th, staff has been very busy pulling together the City Manager's FY '25 proposed budget. The budget book remains a work in progress for the narrative. We're going back through rereading, making sure the narrative is correct, but I want to assure you the numbers are final. Before beginning the presentation, I want to make sure council understands the two handouts we created. So I've had some inquiries about the disabled veteran exemption, tax exemptions, and I've shared that with Ms. Norma Sanchez-Stevens, and I told her, I said, I want to provide this to the entire city council. And so what we did is we pulled that information into a more graphically easy-to-digest document. And I'll send this with the Excel file that I sent to Ms. Sanchez-Stevens earlier this week, so all of you have that in digital format. Let me explain this top table. Let me just send this, explain this top table. So this top table is showing you from the years 2019 through 2024, the percent of all households that have a household or an owner who has some level of disabled veteran tax exemption. And so the total tax, the total number of households with a disabled veteran is shown in that salmon color, and it is represented, the percent of our households is represented by the percent found on the right-hand side. But the number that's really impactful is looking at the percent of our households that have a veteran claiming 100% tax exemption because of his or her service to our country. And I want to be clear, we're very proud of these veterans and we're proud to have veterans as residents. They make great residents. But what I want to point out is, as of 2024, you can see here that the percent of households with disabled veterans has risen year over year, but the percent of households that have a disabled veteran tax exemption of 100% has grown year over year. And in 2024, that's one in five households. So why am I sharing that with you? It's really the bottom chart. So at our current tax rate, you can see in 2024 that we expected to collect, and we've collected nearly the 12.98 million, I'm going to call that 13 million. What we've not collected is shown above that. And so that shows, we have a tax rate that generates a lot of money, but we have exemptions in that tax rate that reduces what we collect versus what would otherwise be assessed. That's all I'm doing here is to show you that that's one of the things we as a community have to manage, and we have one of the highest percents of disabled veterans as a percent of households, as a city. The second one, you've seen this one before, at least you've seen one of the budget dollars. And I really like the budget dollar. I know Mr. Hetzel loves this one. And so what I had staff do is take the one that we provided you last year, which is the budget dollar on the left-hand side, and that's for FY '24, and we've updated it per the budget book that you've been provided tonight for FY '25. Underneath, we call out, what is the, for every dollar in tax, not tax, but for every dollar of revenue that comes into the general fund, how do we spend that? And I think it's important for council to always be able to say, when somebody asks you, what do you do with our tax dollars? So let me start with FY '24. In the general fund, 51% or 50 cents of every dollar is going to police and fire. And then you can see underneath that how it's allocated across administration, our public works, planning and building services, and economic development. And remember, planning and building services are really supporting themselves off of fees collected for services rendered. So let's move over to FY '25. Now this revenue for FY '25 is built on the proposed tax rate that we've discussed with council. And so based upon that and the revenues that we have coming into the general fund, now 61% of every dollar will be going to police and fire. And underneath that, you can see for public works, for non-departmental and economic development. We did provide a footnote that we've taken planning and building services out of the general fund and moved them into a development services fund, which we talked about at the last meeting, July 30th budget workshop. Underneath, we have a pie chart that's in your budget book, and we just want to show, where does that revenue come from? That for every dollar, this is the way you spend it, and I just want council to see that property tax for the FY '25 budget, based upon the tax rate that you directed us to work with, is accounts for 54% of all revenue in the general fund. Sales tax represents about 23%. So we rely upon that, some 77% of our revenues from those two sources. This is just information, and I hope providing this in this format just helps you take that information and be able to recall it, maybe when you're having a conversation amongst yourselves with staff, or maybe with a constituent who's asking you about our budget. Also, today I sent an email. I wanted to update you on the release of the June sales tax figure. We were down, as you may recall, if you had time to look at my email, our June sales tax was lower than we forecasted, and my highlight was really, it was lower slightly than FY[615.66][615.66]'24. So in June of '24, we collected $656,000 in sales tax. In June of '23, we collected about $2,500 more. I just call that flat. I mean, at that point, that's $2,500, but that's flat year over year. And the chart that I provided shows you, and we've shown you this other chart on a regular basis in budget presentations. Well, that release was disappointing, of course, for us, but I thought, we've told council over and over again, this is not a Siblo-centric issue. This is a statewide, I'm sure nationwide, but I'm only focused on Texas. And so we pulled up the sales tax collection for those cities that are around us, Converse, Aguirre, Shirts, New Braunfels, and San Antonio. And you can see that each one of them reported a decline in their sales tax. So there is something going on in our economy. And talking with Ana Miranda, since I sent that email, the adjustment will be less than 1% to our forecasted revenue, and so we're not changing our forecast. I've shared with you how your finance director, Ms. Miranda and I, sit down every month and we look at our revenues coming in and ensure that we're very close to our revenue projections. And if we're not, we are making adjustments to make sure that our expenses are lower. So I wanted to call this back up since I sent this email earlier today. Now let me get into the presentation.
Real quick, Mr. Hicks, do you have a question?
I do. So on the dollar bill one.
Yes, sir.
If we're going to go and we're putting planning and building services into a special fund, then why did we leave a non-departmental? I mean, what is, what is that going to cover? Because I was understanding that utilities helps with the public works as well. I mean.
So I'll ask Ana Miranda to explain non-departmental. Non-departmental is not planning and building services. Non-departmental, every year in the back of all of your departments in the general fund is a non-departmental.
Well, I understand that, but so why didn't we have that before? Or was it just mixed with planning and development?
It was previously mixed into, I believe, the administration? And I will look to Ms. Miranda.
The general fund does have a non-departmental also, and so some of those non-departmental costs are things like the mats, the mats in the lobby areas, the service that provides those, the water service. Other facility costs like just utilities go into non-departmental because it's not specific to a department. Everybody in this building uses water and electricity, and we can't account for who used it.
No, I understand that. Ms. Miranda, I'm just wondering why all of a sudden you have a non-departmental, which obviously should have been non-departmental before, but I mean, it's still $1.2 million.
So then we moved some of the non-departmental over to development services to account for the cost in that building. So the cost in that building, as related to utilities, water and electricity, is used not just by planning and building services, but also by HR. So it's kind of a non-departmental cost, not allocable to a specific department. And so it did reduce the non-departmental in the general fund. The reason that there's an increase in non-departmental in the general fund overall is because we did put the costs that we talked about on July 30th, the costs for public safety, market adjustments, and the cost for five additional police officers and three additional firefighters, is put into non-departmental for now to separate it in case the voters don't approve that. It's not in any particular budget.
I appreciate that last comment. So the reason why non-departmental is a larger amount this year is because we are not spending money that we're waiting for voters to decide whether or not to approve a tax rate above the voter approval rate. We are waiting for that decision, and all the money associated with that decision in this budget is in non-departmental. So if the voters do not approve that, we did not spend in anticipation of that, any of that extra revenue. And non-departmental would be, of course, changed if the voters do not approve the tax rate above the voter approval rate. If the voters approve the tax rate above the voter approval rate on November 5th, then we will allocate those funds associated with police, fire, to hire eight personnel, to move police and fire to market, and the amount of money to move public works essential personnel to market. We will move that from non-departmental into those three budgets. And non-departmental will become a much smaller budget at that point, Mr. Hicks.
So it's setting it aside for now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
And we're happy to talk to any of you after the meeting tonight. If we're not answering your question to your satisfaction, or you're still trying to figure something out, we'll make the time to sit down and talk with you. All right. Let me go to the next one. You've seen this slide. Here we are. We're steps away from holding public hearings for citizen input on your budget for FY '25. We have about, we have two more meetings that are focused on the budget. Let me be clear, even on August 13th and on August 27th, you'll have some budget-related items there. So the major items that are left, on August 13th, you'll have the FY '25 benefit plan. Ms. Veronica Sanchez will give you more detail on that plan. We've given you very high-level feedback that we found a way to keep the healthcare cost flat year over year. We want your direct input, and we've done that in years past on how those plans actually are structured. Of course, on August 13th is officially the City Manager's FY '25 proposed budget, which is what we're going over right now. The FY '25 fee schedule, we will be proposing increased fees, particularly in planning, some other departments as, excuse me, as well. You'll also have consideration of an ordinance calling a special election for the animal services facility and the public safety facility. You already have your August 13th packet, and those items are in there amongst other items. On August 19th, you'll have two public hearings, one on the budget, one on the tax rate. You'll have a resolution to ratify the tax rate. You'll have an ordinance to adopt the budget. You'll have a defeasance resolution. Remember, we as a city are doing something that's very uncommon amongst our peers, and that is, we're putting slightly more money into our INS tax rate so that we can pay down debt. Like each of us who own a home, you want to get ahead of that interest that would accrue otherwise if you have a 20, 25, or 30-year home mortgage. You'd like to pay that off early, you pay that interest early so that you can pay off your debt. That's what the defeasance resolution is, and you've been doing that now for the past two budget cycles now. This will make it the third. You're going to adopt your tax rate, and you'll have an ordinance calling a special election for the tax rate increase. So we have a lot of things. City council has a lot of things to make decisions on and actually take votes on. I just want to remind council that we started our budget process back in, I think it was the last meeting in February, when Ana Miranda gave you the budget kickoff presentation. It was just that high-level presentation showing you things that we would be bringing forward and the timeline for it. You also, on March 16th, held your council strategic management workshop that really started to identify your highest priorities in public safety was a key or a focus during that strategic management workshop. We came back to you the last meeting in April for the strategic management follow-up so that we provided you the products. You approved those products. We put those on the website demonstrating your focus and use of strategic planning. We started our budget workshops on May 28th, and here we are tonight to continue the process.
I've got another question.
Back on June 18th, in your first budget workshop, these were the budget context and key themes that we reviewed. So our economy, Texas is leading the nation with economic prosperity. However, there was even back in June, a note that our economy, we recognize, is slowing down nationally, and of course, here we are today. We know that there's some headwinds with the economy. And so we're keeping a tight eye on revenue streams as a result. And tight job market, not only is it a competitive environment to recruit and retain top talent, there's also something working against the workforce that will continue to put pressure on wages. And that is the continued trend for baby boomers to be retiring. And so the Social Security Administration, of course, releases the numbers of those that are entering and receiving social security, and what they are seeing is a peak of individuals asking to receive their social security benefits. And so the USA is on pace to yield a record 1.7 to 2.1 million for the entire year. In years 2010 through 2019, we had 1 million to 1.3 million each year. So there is an uptick as this generation goes into retirement. On the other end, so who's filling the workforce? What we have is a generation entering the workforce at numbers of around 1 million, excuse me, let me find that number, just over 1 million to 1.3 million. And so we have more retirees leaving the workforce than we have young people entering the workforce. And it's just not a numbers game. That's experience, knowledge, and expertise leaving the workforce that we're going to see in this workforce, this tight job market. To recruit and retain top talent, we have to remain competitive both in compensation and benefits in a fiscally responsible way.
Mr. Reed, if I could pause for a second. I know Councilman Hicks has a question about defeasance. Is that right?
Yes, sir. I'd throw a wrench in this, but so the defeasance, we're paying stuff off early.
Yes, sir.
But yet we're going to the voters and asking them to increase their taxes.
For maintenance and operations. So there are two parts to our tax rate, and I know you know this well, sir, but there are two parts to your total tax rate. Currently, we're at 46.99. 17.93 cents of 46.99, and council knows this, goes just to paying debt. The rest of our 46.99, I'm not doing math in public right now, after you subtract 17.93, does but one thing, maintenance and operation. So what you're going to the voters on is a tax rate increase that will go solely towards M&amp;O. It is solely for public safety.
Yes, but we've been paying it, paying a lot more to it to get it paid off sooner. Why, instead of using those funds to pay it off sooner, we're not using it to help give raises to the individuals?
So you would then just lower your INS tax rate, pay more on interest over the years, and it's not a big difference between 17.93 and what the tax rate is just to pay the debt that is on the books. So if I can recall off the top of my head, over the '23-'24 tax year, we paid off about $1 million, and I think it's slightly a bit more than that. And by doing so, you're saving more than $400,000 in future interest payments that help us manage that debt portfolio.
But I also want to mention that lowering the INS tax rate does not mean that we can increase the M&amp;O tax rate.
Thank you.
Because we are limited on that M&amp;O to the 3.5% of the effective M&amp;O rate, plus 3.5% calculates your voter approval tax.
I just have a hard time paying stuff off, and yet we're still being asked to ask our voters to go out and take out bonds and needing more police. I get it. I just, to me, it don't make no sense to pay something off if we're just going to ask them to increase more debt.
Thank you, Councilman Hicks.
Sounds like a big government.
Appreciate it.
Growth, we continue to see strong growth, and we work closely with the development community, asking them what they see in the next 60 to 90 days. So residential is at a low. It's still over 300 single-family residential permits a year. We still see multifamily kicking off. We do expect that the Siblo Crossing multifamily, which is called the Dorado Apartments, to be kicking off after October 1. We see that demand for residential growth because there are jobs coming to the San Antonio area. It's slowed down since the peak, that was in FY '22 where we were above 500. And of course, the interest rates are affecting that right now. And we are hopeful, of course, like everyone, that the interest rates will get back to 5% or thereabouts. And the residential development community is confident that around 5% will see a return to higher numbers on residential growth. And you all see it, each and every month, it seems like we're opening, we see an opening of a new business in Siblo, particularly on the retail side. We do have, of course, some office development happening right now, and as you'll learn, August 13th, in executive session on economic development, we are continuing to pursue opportunities to attract new primary employers, new businesses to come to our city, in addition to those that are publicly well-known because they're opening their doors here. And so we are on both sides still seeing that growth, and of course, we're managing it so that we can create a quality of life that serves our residents and our businesses. You, as a council, have given us direction along with our impact, that's the Master Plan Advisory Committee, and your P&amp;Z Commission, and your Economic Development Corporation Board. You have been busy this past year to 18 months, working on an update to your comprehensive plan so that you own the plan. The P&amp;Z Commission owns that plan because it's current and it reflects where we are today. Our 2016 comprehensive plan has grown stale. And you've recently approved the strategic plan for the Economic Development Corporation, another tool in our toolkit that will incorporate actions into your annual strategic plan. There's also, for the context for '24 and '25, are the next two elections, the city council composition changes from all districts to four seats with three at large, including the mayor seat up for reelection in 2025. And staffing resources, the pressure of a growing city, but yet not enough revenue in the general fund to add staff, particularly in public safety. And then the stimulus, recognizing that the ARPA funds come to an end this year, this calendar year. We recognize as a city, it's benefited us, but we are no longer budgeting that in our funds after December 31st of 2025. You can't have a project that's encumbered, that's under construction or under activity past that, but you have to have it either encumbered or spent by December 31st of this year. The key themes, I won't belabor the first one, public safety. Another theme is that market compensation. If we want public safety to continue that low crime rate, safe community recognition, we want to ensure that we're attracting and retaining the top talent in our public safety. And as we did three years ago, my commitment to the entire, to the council and to the employees is we're doing a market study over 2025, and we'll be bringing that to you in March to April to May of next year to show you, where's the rest of the organization? Because we focused on police, fire, and public works this year. Street maintenance, you've seen this year, increased activity around our street maintenance, and that is the standard now going forward. That is not an accelerated street maintenance. That is where we should have always been and where we will be going forward. And as we can, through additional funds, through that one quarter or one cent sales tax for street maintenance, as that continues to grow over the next decade, we will grow the amount that we use just on street maintenance. Now, right underneath that is your capital improvement projects. We will execute an FY '25 on six road projects, plus upon all things being in place, including right-of-way acquisition and the design being finalized and going out for bid sometime in summer of 2025. You'll have Tully Road under construction in the calendar year 2025. Infrastructure long-range planning is, we will have a wastewater master plan under development in the coming, in this coming year, and we will be updating our impact fees. It is important with the acquisition of five square miles for wastewater that we have impact fees that apply to that area, and will help cover costs for infrastructure. And lastly, workforce development, given that we all live in a fiscally constrained world, the way you create high-performing organizations, and for all of us who've served in the military, and you have your military occupational skill, military just doesn't say, hey, it's on-the-job training. They send you to school, you learn how to do that job. We, as a city, and every department head, we talk to our employees. We, as a city, and every department head, we talk to our employees and we say, what is the skill, what is the behavior that we need to improve over the next year? And we ensure that we're training our staff to be the best versions of themselves so that a year from now, I can get 110% out of an employee compared to a year ago. Five years into their time with the city, they'll be significantly more capable to serve our community. And so, that's a theme each and every year, but it is a theme that we covered back in June. I want to cover with you now the direction that you gave us at the July 30th budget workshop. Oops, excuse me, I think I, there we are. You'll remember, these were your slides, and so, what I did is simply put in red. What was that takeaway? I'm gonna start with number two, number one is just an obvious one, but number two is, does city council support the creation of Development Services Fund? That will include building inspections and planning services, right? This is an enterprise fund, just like our utility fund, just like our Drains Utility District Fund. An enterprise fund will exist based upon user fees collected. And so, there was support from the majority of council members present and the mayor to create this fund. Comments opposed included concern about development slowing down and protecting employees in the fund. We did address those questions during the budget workshop. With the majority of council members in favor, we have built the FY '25 budget with a Development Services Fund. Planning and building inspections are not in the general fund. Three, does city council have a preference regarding compensation and market study for fire, police, and public work, should funds be available? And you all expressed support for compensation to be market-competitive, but within funds that are available. A couple of council members mentioned move to 95% of market, but there really wasn't a direct direction given on, was it 98% or 95%? Does city council support a 2%, 3%, or 4% merit pay pool for FY, in FY '25, for employees based on available funds? Let me be clear, if an employee is moved to market in FY '25, they are not also getting a merit increase on top of that market adjustment. So, when I say a merit pay pool, that is for all the employees who are not moved to market. So, you were in support of that. What you made very clear is you asked me, as your city manager, to structure it to where the lower wage or salaried positions have a higher percent. And as salaries increase, there's a demarcation where we lower the merit, average merit for those above that amount. And so, based upon your adoption of a budget, based upon what happens in November, merit pay will be handed out following performance evaluations in the November-December timeframe. It will be effective January 1. I cannot tell you today, well, how much money do I have for merit pay? It's based upon what happens with the voters in November. It's either based upon a tax rate of 47.69, or it's based upon a tax rate of 53.4. But your direction was very clear. Fifth?
So.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Cunningham has a comment?
So, with the merit pay, I'm a little confused because I don't remember this being what we discussed. Am I confused, y'all?
I'm confused too, because I know that it was mentioned that maybe, and this is a suggestion I have, is just no pay increases for anyone over $70,000. If you're making $70,000 with the city, you're not getting a pay increase this year. You know, we've got to cut budgets somewhere. We've got to. And those that are making $70,000 or more, that's why I get it, I live comfortable. Nope?
Yeah, well, go ahead, Councilwoman Cunningham.
I'm not gonna start an argument about that because I think that some people can live comfortably on that salary. I don't think it's our job to say, well, you make $70,000, you should be able to get it together because not every situation's the same, not every household's the same. $70,000 does not, I was paying, when my three kids were in daycare, we were paying almost $2,500 to $2,800 a month just for daycare. That does not go far with $70,000. But I do agree that when we discussed it, we discussed having a certain level of salary or position, not even necessarily salary, but a position where, over that position, would not get merit pay this year, if we even did merit pay, because we have so many staff, like looking at that list, we have so many public works specifically who are making a borderline unlivable wage. I don't know how you are supposed to survive and raise a family on $30,000, that's just unrealistic. Yeah, so, I don't remember this wording of it, so that's why I wanted to confirm.
I'm happy to have clarity from you, but let me be clear, after the November election, I have to come back to council on several aspects of this budget. And so, I will bring back, and I will be very clear, how much money is left over that has not been assigned. And I'm going to get direction from you on how we allocate those funds.
Yeah, I do want to make it clear, I don't think any of us is like, don't give raises to anyone, we want staff to be paid less, that is not what we're doing here.
Yeah.
Especially not me, I think that our staff deserve raises. But like Mr. Hicks said, with the money that we have, we have to be careful about how we're spending it. We're in a, pretty much in a deficit if we don't get certain things passed. So, we're having to make very careful decisions on that. And I think that paying, getting those lower-paying employees, lower-paid employees up a little bit to a more livable wage helps us fill those positions, helps us encourage those staff to stay with the city because that gained knowledge from being with the city is valuable to us, it translates into actual dollars. And it is alarming to see the disparity between some of the positions that are way up here and some that are at the bottom, there's a considerable amount of difference in those, so.
Huge disparage. I mean, I look at it this way, Ms. Cunningham, is when Dak, when Dak or Troy Aikman, any of these football stars, I mean, they said, look, Tom Brady, hey, I'll take a pay cut so where I can have the right people, the right team around me. And that's how I look at our upper staff, y'all should be looking at that too. Saying, well, you know what, I don't get a pay raise this year, make 100, 250,000, I'm good. Or 150,000, 170,000, I'm good. It's where the people that are working outside and doing that work understand that, you know, hey, but we've got to cut somewhere. Because like you said, we're in a deficit already for this year because.
We're not in deficit, we are balancing our budget.
Our projection for, well, to me, it's a deficit, we should be growing. Whenever I see all these businesses come in, we should be growing. And whenever we're not, and we're still the same as we were before, or less.
Our revenue stream is flattening.
Right, it's the, it's the sales tax that we're not pulling in what we projected.
Correct.
And that's something that's happening across the board, though, in Selma and New Braunfels, everywhere around us.
And that's what I'm saying, somebody needs to take and say, look, I gotta take a pay cut.
It's a function.
Not literally a cut, but I'm not gonna get a pay raise this year.
Yeah, so.
Right, so what that is, is it's the market reacting to the inflation and the higher prices. And so, therefore, people are cutting back on nice-to-haves. They're paying, of course, for the need-to-haves, the electric bill, you know, the water bill, things like that. But they're cutting back on that discretionary spending. And so, that's where it's hitting all, every city.
But that's what I'm saying, Mayor.
I do want to also add that, now that we have Ms. Sanchez, our new HR director, that we do make it a priority to do a COLA and possibly merit increases with that COLA next year. Because as an employee, sometimes you're okay with one year with no increase, you can kind of handle it, you know that it's bringing those lower salaries up, it's doing that. But year after year after year with nothing is really discouraging. And our staff is in their jobs for a reason. And I want to make sure that we're providing, we're keeping up with that and that we're not forcing people out because they can go get a job, the same job, or even a lower-level job making more money elsewhere. So, I do want to make sure that that's a priority next year, that we're really considering that.
I appreciate council's comment on this. You've looked at every position and what they make, I want to be very clear. You pay market-competitive wages, we've fallen behind in some positions. For others, we don't know yet, we may have fallen behind in other positions. The level of compensation is commensurate with the skills, the knowledge, the expertise, and the education required. And yes, some positions are higher because those are highly skilled, successful people who can drive businesses to be successful. If we don't pay in those positions what the market bears, just like when I started, you'll remember, I was trying to recruit a finance director, and I was looking to market at $110,000. I had not one qualified person banging on my door to be the finance director. And with our market study, council supported moving to market in that area, other areas too. So, I'm just letting council know that I am coming back to you after the November election so that we know what is the money that we actually have. And just like up until now, I've been showing you, if you stay at the tax rate of 46.99, our projection is you're gonna have $345,000 to disperse. We'll figure out what we do with that. At the 47.69 cents, I showed you that you'd have roughly $600,000 to disperse. And I said, we would figure out how to work with that money. And I also gave you options, it was in a sheet that said, it was just scenarios. And it showed that that money won't go as far as we need for the priorities that I've been hearing from council. So, again, after the November election, we'll be back in front, I'll be back in front of you, and we'll talk about merit pay pool. Thank you for your feedback, we'll correct that for the August 13th presentation so that you don't see this, of course, you already have your package, just know, I'm gonna change that bullet point. And what it will say is that I will return to council following the November election to determine merit pay pool, should funds be available. Thank you very much for that feedback. And this is why, after every budget workshop, I have done slides saying, this is what I heard. And I appreciate you correcting me on that one. Number five, as far as the CIP projects, there was consensus on the FY '25 project list with one comment against the list of six roadway projects. There was support to proceed with the FY '25 CIP projects with in-house construction administration. Also, there was consensus, there was consensus, I'm sorry, there's miswording there. There was consensus to place the public safety facility, that's PSF, and the animal services facility, that's ASF, on the November 24 election ballot. Council wants to maintain a significant percent of the debt capacity unassigned in your five-year CIP plan to use towards future wastewater and other potential CIP projects. I don't mean anything by other potential CIP projects, that's a catch-all. There may be something that between now and November, you decide, maybe there is something else we want to do, or so forth. On the tax rate, the majority of city council members supported moving to the voter approval tax rate of 47.69 cents, with one wanting to remain at the current 46.99 cent tax rate. I'm not going to elaborate on that because we needed to go to the voter propositions. In short, city council, there was strong support from city council to move forward with options one and two listed above. And to be clear, right, the public safety facility is a separate and singular ballot measure from the animal services facility. So, there's really three propositions that we're talking about here. So, based upon the budget workshop, and your direction on the previous slides, and the tax rate, which we'll be talking about in this presentation, the proposed budget is based on a tax rate of 53.4 cents, which is 5.41 cents more than the prior year, actually, that's 6.4 cents. No, 5.4 cents, 5.7 cents, sorry. I'm reading off of notes, yes, off of the slide is correct, 5.7 cents above the voter approval rate of 47.69 cents. It is to support, at council's direction, enhancement of public safety levels in police and fire, and provide competitive pay at 98% of market for police, fire, and public works essential personnel.
And that 50, or 0.534 would include if both bonds got passed, right?
No, sir, that would be separate tax rate that is added.
Because right now, we're at 46, and we're going to 47.69, right?
If the voters do not approve the tax rate to 53.40 to support the public safety initiative, we would go to the voter approval rate, because there is a majority of council that said 47.69 is where you wanted to go. Your tax rate, if voters do not approve, the tax rate above the voter approval rate would be 47.69, Mayor.
Okay, that's what we can go to without the vote from the citizens, okay.
That is correct. And if they approve the bonds for the animal safety facilities and the public safety facility, it's up to council by a subsequent action to actually assess an additional tax, because that's the way the proposition will be written, on your voters. You can still say, hey, look at our five-year debt model and the capacity we have. Maybe we go ahead and just absorb those in the five-year CIP. But you're first asking, that's your direction, you're asking us to put on the ballot for the voters to determine whether or not they would like to pass a bond which has a tax rate impact.
Mr. Reed, can you just explain that, since we're recording it in a little bit more detail, of how that impact of, that tax impact will be because of that bond?
Yep.
In reading the slide, I noticed that the fire station slash police substation will have an effect of 2.92 cents on the tax rate.
Yes.
The animal services facility will have an impact of $1.55, not $1, 1.55 cents on the tax rate as well. So, we're starting at 53.40, adjusting for public safety, our police, adding police officers, adding firefighters, what are we looking at here? Are we looking at additionally 4.47?
That is correct, you would add that on the 53.4.
So. However, I want to point out that that will not be in your fiscal year '25 tax rate or your '24 tax rate, it won't be until the bonds are issued. So, when the bonds are issued, it potentially would be fiscal year '26 tax rate that would be impacted.
And if you decide to increase the tax rate to cover the debt issued for those facilities. Again, I've shared with council, your debt capacity can absorb both of those facilities without asking voters to increase the tax rate or to have a tax rate increase to fund those.
And apologies, Ms. Miranda, I didn't hear anything that you said, if you wouldn't mind repeating it one more time.
Yes, ma'am. The tax rate impact that you mentioned for the bonds would not occur until the bonds are sold. So, when council gave authority to issue those bonds, depending on which year those facilities would be constructed, that's the year that would be impacted for the additional 4.47 cents that you mentioned. So, it will not impact fiscal year '25, but future years. And at that point, because our assessed values are increasing, the impact is expected to be less than 4.47 cents.
So, for example, I've worked in previous communities, the last one I was with, we did ask, and we did put on a ballot, a bond initiative that made very clear, if you support this bond, it will impact your tax rate by this amount. It was overwhelmingly, it was all for transportation, it was overwhelmingly supported. However, because of the growth in the assessed value in the city, the council ultimately said, we're not going to pass on that tax rate to our constituents because we had, they had the capacity within their tax model to pick that up. And so, ultimately, it will be your decision. So, Anna Miranda made that very clear, just because they approve it doesn't mean you have to pass on a tax rate increase to cover those bonds. You're asking them because this council said, we want to make sure we can build them. And so, that's what I heard from July 30th, is let's move forward with those ballot initiatives. Right.
So, if they deny it, we just have a, we're three years where we can't do anything with it, right?
That is correct.
And can we wait? Okay.
Then after the three years, we can, if we've got the funds available, we can just go out and do it ourselves without having to go to them.
That's right.
That's during the three years, we can do it. We can, we can't raise the tax, if a proposition gets denied, we cannot put it back on the ballot for three years. However, if we have the funding available during that three years that doesn't require a voter-approved tax rate, then we can move forward with it.
But we'd have to still go out for a bond to pay for them.
Right, if we.
And if we have to go out for a bond, and they already voted and said, no, we cannot. Now, if we've got the funds available, I understand, but I also know what I've learned from TML as well, we can't just say, okay, they said no, well, we'll just go out and get an obligation bond, and we'll pay for it ourselves, we cannot do that.
Did you have a comment? Go ahead.
I was going to agree with.
I was going to agree with Councilwoman Cunningham, that the city can, by alternate means, like, because you had it worked into your debt plan already, to, you still can accomplish the facilities, you just can't go and ask voters again for three years. I will say that there is strong advocacy against going out and getting another, like a certificate of obligation. Whether or not you technically can is a different conversation, but there's strong advocacy against doing that in the three years, mainly because it looks bad to voters.
Those voters, and...
Right. But technically, we can, and it is already worked into your plan, so you specifically in this situation should be able to do it.
Sanchez Stevens, have we answered your question and clarified the impact? Okay. Next here is the city council will take a vote on August nineteenth. We are showing in blue corrections on our slideshow, and in red was strike through a deletion. To call a special election to place on the ballot, a proposition to raise the tax rate above the voter approval tax rate. You also said the general fund for FY twenty-five should add five police officers and three firefighters, which is assuming that the voters approve the tax rate of fifty-three point four. Also, merit pay pool will be provided for all employees, but not included in, not included in the move to market competitive pay with a higher percent. Now, we just talked about this on the previous slide, so I will correct that, as I've already said earlier. And so that merit pay pool, and the decision about that, is one that will be made by council following the November election. So I'll correct that bullet point as well. The addition of eight FTEs and merit pay will not be effective until January one, twenty twenty-five. So we would not move police and fire or public works to competitive pay, assuming a tax rate above voter approval rate in advance of the November fifth election. Just isn't right. You don't know if that's going to happen. So if it is approved, it'll give us time from that November election to January one for human resources to work through the process of changing everyone's compensation, us meeting with those employees, showing them what their compensation has moved to, and then making that effective on January one. The planning and building inspections departments are removed from the general fund and will be in the new development services fund. What does this mean? So this slide right here tries to sum it up. The FY twenty-five general fund budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by over three and a half million, or an increase of more than twenty-three percent. And of that amount, just slightly more than one million is tax revenue to be raised from the new property added to the tax roll this year. It means also, the summary of our budget workshop on July thirtieth, that on August eighth, city council will set the date for the public hearing on the FY twenty-five proposed budget for August nineteenth. Also tonight, the city council will set the maximum tax rate at fifty-three point four, and set the date for public, for the public on the tax rate for August nineteenth, to allow subsequent adoption of the proposed twenty twenty-four, which is for FY twenty-five, property tax rate up to this amount. You do this every year when you set the maximum tax rate. You are not voting to actually adopt that. You're voting to say, that's our maximum tax rate, we go out and advertise that, which provides public notice. And then actually, on August nineteenth, you take, you make action, you take action on your tax rate. On August nineteenth, city council will vote to adopt the proposed budget and tax rate, as well as consider other budget-related items. Any questions? So this is just the recap of July thirtieth.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so I'm, okay. I was really surprised to see our budget. I didn't expect to see our budget tailored to a point fifty-three tax rate. I felt like we were doing it to a point forty-seven sixty-nine, because that's what we agreed to, the approved, you know, voter tax rate. So to see that, what, why aren't we looking at what the budget would look like if the voters decline, you know, the public safety aspect of it, and at the point forty-seven sixty-nine? Why are we spearheading straight into the point, the point fifty-three forty?
So Ms. Sanchez Stevens, city council in the state of Texas, the way that you develop a budget and set a tax rate is you first have to adopt a budget before you set the tax rate. The tax rate is set to support this budget. The reason why you're being given a budget that relies on a voter approval tax rate of fifty-three point four is we're expecting that you're going to the voters asking for that. In advance of that, we're adopting, you're adopting a budget that reflects the expenditures at the fifty-three point four. But as we've explained just earlier, when Mr. Hicks asked the question about non-departmental, your budget is built on a forty-seven point six nine, but in non-departmental, there is this amount of money that is solely related to the voters approving that tax rate increase. So should the voters not approve the tax rate increase, your budget is really built on a forty-seven point six nine. We will come back to you, should the voters not approve it, come back to you and amend the budget, and we will move those funds in the non-departmental that were assuming a tax rate increase approved by the voters.
I guess I would prefer in the summary or throughout the budget itself, that I would explain that clearly.
Okay.
Because it just looks like we're going to a point fifty-three straight across the board, and I don't like the way the non-departmental is laid out just as well, because it kind of feels like a small little slush fund to kind of put all these little incidentals in there. Because I think at the very beginning, I had mentioned, how do we know as taxpayers that our five cents is going to public safety? I wanted to see that with transparency and with clarity, that it was just for our police department and for our firefighters, because I want to see where that money is going.
Okay.
And just going back, just one slide, I didn't get to ask the question sooner, I was just given a chance for the presentation. But I remember, I think it was our, either our second or our first budget workshop, when we were talking about bringing up to competitive pay for our police, fire, and public works, we also talked about the drain, drainage fund, the water fund and so forth. We talked about all of those increases, and I remember there was a point where we said, let's scratch out public works, because we're going to go ahead and increase a dollar in our drainage, for our drainage, our utilities...
Yes.
...to cover the cost for, for public works. So I'm just curious, just look at, could you please, just, what, when it says here, ninety-eight percent of market for police, fire, and public works essential personnel...
Yes.
What are the public works essential personnel that we're looking to fund in this?
To move to market?
Yes.
Okay, let me tell you, in streets, it's the crew leader. All three crew leaders are, are already at market, so we're not increasing crew leaders, they're at market. Maintenance workers, one, very entry level, there are seven of those positions, and maintenance worker, two. One would move to market, the other two are at market. The street superintendent is already at market, per the June eighteenth budget workshop presentation, slides seventy-one through seventy-five. Parks, the building custodian, it would move to market. The crew leader is already at market. Maintenance workers, one, there's four of them, would move to market. Maintenance worker, two, there's two of them, they would move to market. In administration, there's a fleet mechanic which is at market, there's an infrastructure inspector already at market.
Okay, and so, okay, so Ms. Reed, I'm curious, I went ahead and went through the, it was workshop number two?
Yes.
And there was a slide that said, cost drivers in the drainage utility district fund budget, and I was looking, just kind of comparing, it says proposing to adjust compensation to ninety-eight percent of market based on study, sixty-five thousand eight hundred. Proposing two additional positions, MS four compliance technician and labor position for seventy-two thousand six eighty-nine. So it seems to me that there's a lot, I was, I guess, I was under the impression that we were going to add these positions based on the drainage fund and not on the, the rate, on the, I felt like it was just public safety is all we were looking to, at police officers, at firefighters, and the public works or the drainage fund would fund, would fund that, the rest of the public works needs.
So I've said very consistently in the past presentations that we were, so let's jump back to June eighteenth. On June eighteenth, we had Chief Andres, we had Chief Troncoso, we had Public Works Director Tim Foose. Each give you a very detailed presentation on those three areas. Following that, we had Veronica Sanchez talk about the market study for all three areas. And then we had slides that showed you, to move those three areas to market was X dollars. For police and fire, it added up to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move public works, just streets and parks, and I, I'm not thinking about the ones in drainage utility district fund or the utility fund. It was somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars to move those essential personnel, which I just covered with you, to market. And so as we talked about a tax rate increase, because that was in that June eighteenth presentation, I said, it is to enhance public safety by adding five police officers, adding three firefighters, moving all of police and fire to market where the market showed to move, and to move public works essential personnel to market. And I've repeated that at each budget workshop.
No, sure. I was just going through everything, just trying to make sure everything connected, and I'm sure things move along the way. When we were receiving, we didn't have a whole lot of time to look at this, because it was handed to us the day of our last meeting on July thirtieth, and it says public works eighty-seven thousand. So all of those positions that you've mentioned would equate to eighty-seven thousand?
To bring them up to value?
To move them to market, yes. Now, we have done a more detailed analysis based upon the people working today. The vacant positions are the ones that, right, we're not moving anybody to market, they're vacant. Based upon that, in this presentation, I'm showing you that we can move those in the general fund to market for sixty-five thousand dollars, or I believe that's the amount that I put in there.
And just to clarify, are there any new positions in this eighty-seven thousand that we're also funding? Or is it just to bring up to market?
Yeah, I'm talking about the general fund, we're talking about the general fund.
I just want, just for clarity.
Right. And I've been very clear with council, the only added positions are eight, and that is five police officers and three firefighters.
So real quick follow-up on her question, you mentioned parks employees, is that coming out of the wastewater funds, or is that coming out of this?
Parks is in the general fund.
So that is coming out of the...
Is it part of that eighty-seven thousand?
And June eighteenth budget workshop, the July sixteenth budget workshop, I've repeated myself on those, and I'm sorry if...
No, no, that's fine. Just, and just to be clear, because I'm sorry, I've just gone through this stuff a little over, there was a slide that said, okay, so a dollar increase in base drainage rate for one ERU related to bringing compensation to market and adding a labor position. So just going through those things, that's why I bring this back up, because again, I was just under the impression, the drainage fund, the increase of utilities was going to help bring everyone's pay to market, and public safety was separate.
So in the drainage utility district, what we were proposing was an increase in fees, but we were saying to move them to market, and I've said that there are presently ten positions in the drainage utility district. Those would be moved to market, not based upon revenue in the general fund, but based upon revenue in the drainage utility district fund, because that's an enterprise fund. So what I've been saying is that those would move to market, and there is a cost for that, and that's paid for through the fees collected in the drainage utility district fund. Same thing in the utility fund. There's a total of twenty-one employees, but four of them are in the utility billing. We've been focused on the seventeen who are in water and wastewater. And there are slides that say to move them to ninety-eight percent to market is X amount. And so the utility fund would pay for that market, not the general fund.
Public works employees, half of them are in the general fund and half of them are in either utility or drainage, so it's a split. We say public works, and when we say public works, we mean all of them, but, but half of them are funded by the enterprise fund and half of them by the general fund. Streets and parks in the general fund. And we won't use drainage fees or utility fees to increase wages in the general fund.
So, so council, right, I, I think this is shared leadership. If now you're having different thoughts, and say, hey, what would that tax rate be if it's, you want to find a way to move the parks and streets, public works essential personnel to market competitive pay, just like that is happening in the utility fund and the drainage utility district, then I'll go back to that forty-seven point six nine cent revenue scenario where there's five hundred and ninety-two thousand, that's our estimate. And we're going to put aside the amount to move them to market using that, I'm going to call it six hundred thousand dollars. We'll recalculate the fifty-three point four to exclude that as part of the public safety tax increase.
Yeah, because I don't want somebody in parks deciding, look, utilities, I work in the water, wastewater, they're getting a raise, so there's an opening, I'm transferring out, and then you leave one department.
It's already happening.
Well, I know it's happening, and that's why I want to make sure that we nip it now before it becomes a huge problem, because I saw it when I worked at Shirts, that's what they'd do, they'd, well, I can make more money over here.
So we, you'll see on a later slide, I am proposing, within a forty-seven point six nine tax rate structure, that we move public works in the general fund, that's street, and that's parks, we move them to market effective October one, because we are simply so far behind market, they just need to move. And I can do that without knowing the outcome of the voters' decision in November. We can do that based on a forty-seven point six nine.
Got the five hundred thousand, or?
Nearly six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand, right, five hundred plus thousand, okay.
It squeezes, right, what's available for you to do with in the general fund, but clearly, we can do that. Ms. Sanchez Stevens, did you have any other questions? Did I not fully answer a question?
So if we can do that with the voter approval tax rate...
Yes.
If we can do that, can, what is currently being used for that, that six hundred K for the voter approval tax rate? What did we put in there?
So what I said in our meeting, and, and what I did is, I showed you what we estimated would be above the twenty-eight percent fund balance requirement, and at forty-seven point six nine, I'm just going to say it was roughly six hundred thousand. And I gave you scenarios. There's a lot of things in the general fund, it's a, more than a twenty-two million dollar fund. And so what you can do is, you can move streets and parks to market using a portion about anywhere from seventy thousand to about eighty thousand. That leaves five hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred thousand.
I would...
So we need a merit pay pool, you need other things in the general fund, and that's what I covered.
I would prefer to put those public works positions in that guaranteed thing and take them out of the vote.
Okay.
And just leave it for police and fire, for the additional police and fire personnel, and then the raises for police and fire. I think Ms. Sanchez Stevens brought up a good thought that it is a little confusing, because we do have two different pools of funding, we have the utility fund and we have the, or the drainage fund or whatever it is, and we have general fund, and I think that that will be confusing for the public. And we know that those staff need the raises, and I don't, I don't want it to look like we're basing it on a vote, because we're, we're not. We want to give them those raises, it needs to be guaranteed. At least, that's my opinion, I don't know if y'all agree, but I think that if it's only seventy or eighty thousand, I think that that's something that we should include in the budget, whether the approval for public safety goes forward or not.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think as we're, we're saying that the increase in the tax is so that way we can hire more officers, we can, you know, the form more officers and things like that, the fire personnel...
Yes, sir.
I think it's much more clear, it, it fits with the other bonds that we're putting on the ballot, we're doing a public safety facility, we're doing animal services, and we're going to propose an increased tax rate for the public, public safety, for police and fire. I think they all make sense together, throwing public works in there is a little confusing. And I, I think, I don't know how much of an impact that would be to this tax rate, but I think it may bring it down a little bit from the five-three four zero, and that might be slightly more palatable, because five, going up that much is like a huge lap.
Thank you for that feedback. If, if that's the direction you want, could we take a ten-minute break? Sure. Because the next slide, actually, Ana Miranda takes over to do all funds overview, and when we come back, we'll have a new tax rate that removes the move to market competitive pay for those essential personnel in public works that are in the general fund. And so we will have that ready for you.
Okay.
Because you have, you have a motion tonight.
It will be. To add to that, you know, what she's saying, I mean, when we're increasing our water, we're increasing our drainage, and then we... increasing our drainage, and then we add 5.3%, I mean, 53 cents or 5 cents onto that...
Yes, sir.
It's going to kill people. Not kill them literally, but it's going to, it's going to put a hurt on certain people.
So the rate on here is for $100,000 home, for every $100,000, it's 100, I can't find it, of course, I can't find it now.
It's in the presentation.
But it's like $57 for every $100,000 in your, in your home. So most of our homes around here are 300 to 400,000. That's 150 to 200 dollars a year. It's not something that we're all thrilled to pay, but we haven't had tax increases in several years, and I think now it's kind of coming back to get us. We've had all this growth, and we haven't, we haven't been able to get the sales tax that we need to generate. We have 4 million, almost $4 million that's in property taxes that we don't receive because of the veterans exemptions. We tried to get something to go through at the state level to get some kind of...
Right. And our state rep got voted out, and so did Hugh Shine from Bell County. He was the author of the bill. House Bill 1613.
So I mean, we're still going to push for that, but we're still operating at 6...
We're pushing on Monday, Tuesday.
Good. We have 50, we have 54% of our public that's paying, potentially paying the full property tax amount, but this isn't even including those who are disabled or on a frozen tax rate. So I think we're struggling, but I don't want to raise taxes or ask the voters to raise taxes more than what's necessary.
Okay. We're going to take a 10-minute recess. The time is now. What do you got, Katie? 7:42. We'll resume at 7:52.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. If Mr. Beekman needs access to the podium to do something technical, Ms. Anna Miranda can present from her seat over here. Is that good, Tracy?
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Anna Miranda will take it, Ms. Anna Miranda will take it from here, from her seat. And we'll wait for Ms. Norma Sanchez-Stevens to return before we go to the next section. Now, Mayor and Council, do each of you have a paper copy of the PowerPoint?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
They all have it.
All right.
I got it.
Okay. Ms. Miranda, if you all want to pick up from here, then?
Do I need a clicker? Can I go up there?
And that is...
Thank you. So the all funds overview. You've seen this chart before. For fiscal year '24, we've updated it with fiscal year '25 numbers, all the operating funds. There are four operating funds being proposed this year, the General Fund, Utility Fund, Development Services Fund, and the Drainage Utility District. What used to be three last year are now four, but all of the same services are being provided. The budget for that is $48.8 million, combined with all of the other funds at $24.3 million is a total combined budget of $73.1 million. Daily operations of the city are accounted for within these four funds. Total expenses increased by approximately $7.3 million, or 17.7% when compared to the prior year budget. You can see that approximately $4 million in total between the General Fund and the Development Services Fund, and $3.1 million in the Utility Fund and the Drainage Utility District. The overall increase in the General Fund of $4.1 million is offset by the transfer of $3 million to the new Development Services Fund. Adjusting compensation of public safety and public works positions to market and adding eight public safety personnel account for approximately 50% of that increase, or $2 million. Other increases in the General Fund include those items that you're aware of, the public safety dispatch ILA, legal services increasing for litigation, fleet replacement, the retirement plan, increased contributions, liability, insurance, and economic development initiatives. The increase in the Utility Fund is related to the increase in our water supply costs, as well as our wastewater treatment costs going up by 3%. An allocable share of CCMA plant expansion, the new personnel being proposed, and consulting costs, and transfers to the General Fund. Similarly, in the Drainage Utility District, there are also consulting costs related to a drainage master plan, new personnel to FTEs being proposed, increase in capital outlay, and increase in the transfer to the General Fund for their allocable share of the public works administration costs. The General Fund is the more constrained budget because of the requirement to maintain 28% fund balance. The operating funds of the Development, the new Development Services Fund, the Utility Fund, and the Drainage Utility District, it includes, the new Development Fund includes the building inspections and planning services areas. It does not create new positions, but moves the seven existing employees in the Planning Department out of the General Fund. Code enforcement will remain in the General Fund. The Utility Fund budget includes a fee increase of 4% to water and 3% to wastewater charges to cover the increased costs of providing those services. As Mr. Reed mentioned... As Mr. Reed mentioned earlier, it supports 22 FTEs, including one new administrative position. This budget provides for market competitive pay for the existing 17 public works position at a, at a rough cost of $63,000. The drainage utility district includes that fee increase of a dollar that was discussed earlier, and covers the additional cost of two new positions, bringing that to 12 FTEs. And it also provides for market competitive pay adjustments for the existing public works positions at a cost of $66,000.
Do we really need the one new administrative position in the utility building office? I mean, we're, we're trying to cut funds here, and we're looking at hiring another person. I think that's somewhere where we can see-
And it is a clerk or entry level position?
I understand that, but-
Yes, sir.
It, it, we're still paying insurance, we're still paying, you know? I'm just saying, there-
We've been asked to do more by our customers, for example, we have the capability of alerting them to leaks early, earlier in the system, instead of waiting for them to get a bill and realizing that they must have had a leak. But to do so, we need more time and more personnel to be able to do those, those extra things that are expected of us, as well as trying to maintain collections on accounts that we do not shut off. So, for example, we monthly, or twice a month, we print a disconnect list, but we don't have a disconnect list for our garbage accounts, for our commercial garbage accounts. Those are manually, have to be looked at every month to see if they're paying timely or discontinue their garbage service. And that's a manual process that's currently not being consistently done. As well as our wastewater only customers, as you know, Green Valley SUD provides water service to a portion of the city, we don't have the ability to disconnect those customers. We have to go through Green Valley SUD to disconnect them, at a higher cost for our citizens. We'd like to take the initiative to calling those customers and setting up payment plans with them, instead of them paying the additional cost of being disconnected and reconnected through GB SUD, which is also an inconsistent process, because their dates differ from our dates of cutoff.
I understand, I, I'm just looking at, we're sitting here, needing a very tight budget, and we're gonna add another position.
So I'll add to what Ms. Miranda speaks about, this one position in the utility fund, and that is, the existing staff in that fund continue to support more customers. So again, it is a workload issue, it is the ability to do more for our utility customers, and that's why I was supporting this position in the utility fund. It's different than the general fund.
And we've added 2,000 accounts since the last, the last increase in customers, or the last increase to staff. The development services fund summary, because this is the first year, it has a beginning fund balance of zero, total revenues exceed total expenses by $213,000, which would be the projected ending fund balance, and that's about 18 percent, I believe, I didn't write that number down. The new development services fund is an enterprise fund, and so it would be used to account for operations more like a business, so that the cost of providing goods and services cover the cost of the expenses. We don't want any taxpayer dollars to fund these activities. The utility fund summary shows a beginning fund balance of $8.5 million, total revenues of $19.4, and total expenses of $19.7, which draws down fund balance by about $300,000, which is related to capital related items, capital outlay. Similar, similarly, I have a lot of trouble with that word, in the drainage utility district, the beginning fund balance is $845,000, total revenues of $1.5 million, total expenses of $1.9, and that's a drawdown of the fund balance to $438,000, again for capital items, one-time costs. In the general fund, we've been talking a lot about fund balance and the 28 percent requirement, beginning fund balance is almost $6 million, total revenue and total expenses are about balanced within $40,000. The projected ending fund balance is right at $6 million, our fund balance requirement is 5.9, and so there is available funds of $106,000 remaining, or in excess of our 28 percent requirement. We've been over these slides before, I just want to bring to your attention that property taxes, of course, is our largest source of revenue at, for the fiscal year '25 budget at $12.9 million, and that is at the proposed tax rate of 534. Sales taxes amount to $5.4 million, and that's a revised estimate from, from our original adopted budget. Of just an increase of $51,000 for next year, and that's, that's related to the downturn that we've been experiencing. Overall, our revenues are increasing by 3.6 percent, and that is with the, the negative adjustment to permits and fees, moving $3.2 million over to the new development services fund. You've seen this chart before, sales tax continue to grow, whoops, went too far. Year over year, we have seen, we're going from our double-digit increases to single-digit increases, and so 2024 looks like an 8.8 percent increase, and we're budgeting for a 9 percent increase next year. We may, we may be adjusting these numbers based on, throughout the year, we may need to do a budget amendment if sales taxes don't come in as we forecasted. General fund expenses, this is a comparison between fiscal year '24 adopted budget and fiscal year '25 proposed budget, and you can see that the negative numbers in planning and building services is because we've moved those out into its own fund. You see a lot of other negative numbers, for example, city secretary's budget, $292,000, and that is primarily related to moving legal services out of that budget and moving it into non-departmental, and that's another reason non-departmental is increased by as much as it has. In finance, you also see a big increase of, or decrease of $200,000, again, that's related to Guadalupe appraisal district, moving that into non-departmental. And that's, that's part of the increase in non-departmental. So the overall, the biggest increase you see on here is the $3.1 million in non-departmental, which again, is where we have set aside the funding for police positions, fire positions, and the market adjustment. And in the line item details, within the non-departmental budget, you can see there's, there are two numbers that speak specifically to these increases, so that they're not, they're not just mixed in there. I know Ms. Sanchez Stevens, if you were worried about that getting kind of lost in there, we can tell you, or show you exactly which line items make up those increases. We did put in, I know the last time we spoke on July 30th, the SRO program had not been reinserted into the general fund, that has been reinserted into the general fund with, as a revenue neutral proposition, so revenues equal expenses, and didn't impact the fund balance, we take that out of the fund balance calculation. Again, there are five positions in the police department, and three new positions in the fire department, and so that, we have set aside $930,000 in non-departmental for those positions. And we've set aside $1 million for the merit increases or the market increases for police and fire, as well as public works. And so we'll make that adjustment to remove that portion before we meet again.
Counsel, before you go to the next slide, so some of you have sent me emails, I've sent, I've sent emails explaining when the SRO job description is coming to council, when we'll be bringing the council policy about renewal of the SRO ILA, I just want, make sure everybody's reading this slide. August 27th, we'll have the SRO job description in front of you for your input and review on, in September, I expect the first meeting in September is we bring you a draft, we talk about the city council policy on the renewal of the SRO ILA, and then we'll bring back the second meeting in September, based upon your feedback, a city council policy for you to approve, so that you put those two things in place, following your approval of the ILA back in July, thank you.
Under the other expenses, did you want to talk about the city attorney's office expenses? We, we have made the adjustment to return that to a flat, a flat rate with no increase, until council decides in the next quarter, or the first quarter of fiscal year, calendar year '25, to make an adjustment.
And so council, based upon your feedback at the budget workshop, there is no proposed increase in the flat rate for fiscal year 2025. You will schedule an annual review, you will have that review, based upon your action following that review, any compensation adjustment will be based upon your direction at that time. We have represented in past presentations, legal services for litigation and special projects, we've simplified it, it's no longer one whole slide, it's just a part of this slide. So we've said the Meritage Homes versus City of Ciblo, you've authorized that to move forward, and we expect not more than $75,000, but as you know, all litigation is subject to the actual work that's done, but we've put within the $210,000, $75,000 to go towards that. All other items, and there were some seven special projects that we, or litigation that we've assigned to our city attorney's office, that would be $135,000 towards that effort. Thank you.
So the, the other items that we mentioned are non-departmental, will, will be distributed or allocated to the, to the appropriate departments, depending on the outcome of the election in November, and that's the employee performance payroll and market adjustments for public safety. As Mr. Reed mentioned earlier, public works, essential personnel in streets and parks are expected to be moved to market compensation October 1st, we're not, due to the nature of those jobs and how quickly we're losing staff, we, we plan to make that effective at the very beginning of the fiscal year. And as he mentioned earlier, funding for ACOG's on-demand transit service is not included in this budget.
Ms. Miranda, council, yesterday, I received an email from ACOG. After months of asking, yeah, after months of sending them emails, asking for a response, and so the gentleman, not Sean Scott, but Dwayne, and Dwayne's last name is eluding me right now, he said, here's the renewal, I open it up, it's $8100. And I respond to him, I said, excuse me, previous comments from Mr. Scott has been that this will be north of $200,000, he said, that will not be in FY '25, that will be in FY '26. So it is not loaded in the budget right now, if council wants to entertain $8100 for that on-demand response transit service, as well as they provide shuttle service at Ciblo Fest for FY '25, we could load that into the budget. I'll forward that email, I simply have not had the time to forward that since yesterday getting it. If you give us that direction today, we can put that in the FY '25 budget for $8100. We will bring the ILA renewal in front of you in the next month, if you give us that direction.
Mr. Hetzel, I know that Mr. Hetzel was showing me his paperwork earlier that showed that, you know, the, the amount of traffic, I will per se, I'll call it that, from Guadalupe County, and from our general area was 200 and some, uh-
Thousand, yeah.
It was a lot of transportation, so I think it's something that, if it goes up more than that, which is what we've been paying, then absolutely, we need to, to scrap it, because there are people that do utilize it, and we just let them, need to let them know that come next year, I don't want to just cut them off right now, you know, at the knees, here it is August, come October, well, sorry, that service is out of, so I, I would recommend we put that back in there, the $8100, and then move forward from there, because if it's gonna be $250,000, but they need to let us know a long head of times, where we've got two months to let these people know that they're not-
Completely agree, Mr. Hitz, but if, Mayor, you want to get the council to give us direction, we'll take that direction.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, it sounds like everybody is in agreement, I, I've heard some nods from Katie and, and from you, as far as the $8100 to authorize that amount. Do you agree? Does anybody disagree? I think you have direction, Mr. Reed.
I think I flipped too many pages. These, these also are costs you've seen before, we've talked about the mandatory cost increases in the general fund, including TML insurance, TMRS contribution, utilities, telecommunication and contract services, the ILA with shirts for dispatch services, the ILA with Guadalupe appraisal district, and the ILA with EMS, shirts EMS. We're also absorbing the $250,000 in reduced revenue with the reduction of the ARPA funding. The healthcare costs, we, we mentioned on July 30th as well, although there is a bid projection of 6.2 percent, the way we've restructured and added a mid-level option for employees would allow us to provide a good level of insurance at no additional cost to employees, in fact, savings to employees and savings to the city. You'll see, or you'll hear a presentation from Ms. Sanchez on August 13th in much more detail than we've provided to you.
I guess my question on this would be, are they gonna have to pay more out of pocket? I mean, whether the, the rate goes up or not, are they gonna be having, are they gonna be having to pay more for deductible?
The deductible, it will be increasing in the mid-level plan, they have the option to stay at the higher level plan, at a, at an increased cost. So, we, we don't have very many employees that, that reach their deductible. I think you have that number, don't you?
I will have that information, yes. And it, it does allow the, the employee that's currently on the low-level plan to go to the mid-level plan, which is a reduction out of pocket and a reduction in rate, so better plan option at less cost.
Moving on to the tax rate overview, this is where we've added a slide based on discussion before the break, and the original slide that you were shown on June 18th and July 16th showed a total of 5.71 cents added to the tax rate for adjusting compensation to 98 percent of market, and adding five officers and three firefighters, and that was for public works and public safety. If we omitted public works from that and covered that with, within the VAR rate, we would be looking at a reduction of .33, so instead of a 5.71 cent increase, it'd be a 5.38 cent increase. The tax rate calculation would go from 534 to 5307, and that's there on the right, on the right side of the screen. Is there any discussion on, on the tax rate? In this calculation?
Actually, if we could go back a little bit, I'm sorry, Ms. Miranda, I'm going through some things, I meant to say something before we went into this tax portion, I noticed in, back in the SRO ILA, it says on that particular slide that there are four new SRO positions in the SRO program consistent with the approved SRO ILA. Are we moving, and I noticed in the budget, there was nine positions in that SRO, are we going to nine SROs?
Nine SROs, there are, they, there are currently nine SROs in the FY '24 budget, we've been unable to fill them all, and we've been operating on five SROs, so we haven't-
Okay, again, I just want to clarify, the things that I'm under the impression of, whenever we go through these things, I feel like when we were doing the SRO ILA, that we were kept at five, that we were gonna go into it at five, we were not gonna have a total of nine, we were gonna go ahead and add those four that we had budgeted for, and put them back into our patrol force, did I misunderstand this?
What we had discussed was, we had four vacancies in patrol, and we were going to keep the SROs in the patrol positions until all of patrol was filled, and then we would start moving them over into the SRO positions. But there are nine SROs, well, there's two sergeants and then seven officers.
Okay.
But they would be filled, once the, once the patrol officers are filled, then the ones off the top would move over to SROs.
There are seven schools-
There are seven schools in Siblo City Limits. And so the Texas law is to have one police officer at each school, and then I believe there was one for a sergeant, is that right, in a rover with the other?
I'll let Mr. Huggins speak to that.
The ILA that was, that city council approved would be two sergeants, seven SRO officers, once patrol is filled, then we will start filling the other four SRO positions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, that's been the discussion.
How many more slides do we have? I'd kind of like to cover some of these items that we need to vote on. We're getting close to 8:30.
I did want to mention that there is an FTE schedule in your budget book, and it does show, the only change in the police schedule of FTEs was a change to add one sergeant and reduce one officer. So the overall number of sworn personnel has remained the same.
No, no, that's fine. I felt like since we didn't have them all full, I didn't think that we were going to keep that as a, being that we went into a new ILA, and being that we got that new ILA like the night of council, and we didn't have an opportunity to go line item by line item, because otherwise that would have kept us here until midnight, right? And we were having that open discussion. So I would also, I noticed that in the patrol side of the budget, there is only two officers added in the budget for fiscal year 25, but we're supposed to have five new positions for patrol officers, and I saw it increase from 20 to 22. Where are the other two?
There actually has been...
So if you go, if you go where it's, it says here, general fund, on that generalized page...
There's been some changes made in, in the divisions within police department, and so some of those have gone into the support services division or into the CID division.
Yeah, we, so when you look in the patrol division, you have the 20 officers in patrol. I'm not, I guess, I need some clarity on 22. We have 20 officers in patrol. We have a officer that's assigned to investigations, that's a kind of a continuing investigation position or education position there, and we had an officer that serves as a PIO. Both of those positions, backfield patrol, anytime we need them there. So that's the way those positions have been assigned. Neither of those positions are filled though, so we don't have 22 in patrol, but we, if we...
We will have 22 in patrol with the four additional officers.
Yes, we get ready to add, yeah.
Okay, I don't think that's what, so we're going to do a tax increase to add more patrol officers, but we're not going to have more patrol officers. So I just, I want to be careful with like the language that we're using because we're sa, well, it does say four patrol officers and one traffic control officer, but it's not built into the fiscal year 2025.
I, let me, let me be clear, because, I mean, we could sit down and look at this. We have 20 officers assigned to patrol, right? If we add five, you have 25 officers in patrol. You're adding four patrol officers and one traffic officer. That's what you're adding.
So here it says fiscal year 2024, police officer 20, fiscal year 2025, it says 22.
Oh, so, let's, Anna, do you have a response for, do we need to look at that? Because, go ahead.
It's a matter of where those two positions were allocated. So Chief Andres mentioned that there are two patrol officers that backup patrol, but are currently utilized, one in CID and one in PIO, Public Information Officer. Those two positions were not actively doing patrol duties, and so they're really 18 patrol officers, plus four is 22. And so the, where we are expensing...
That has been the case when I provided a presentation on the police department since we've had that. We, we have a PIO officer, and we have an officer that is investigations, that will absolutely serve in patrol. The Siblo Police Department does have a officer development program that they have used over years where we've placed an officer in investigations when, for a continuing education position. Those officers backfield patrol when they are needed there. So we've always had a PIO officer.
We need them all the time. We need them all the time.
Well, let me say this.
Well, no, we do.
We also need someone to do the PIO position too as well. We need someone to assist in investigations. We could talk about that, but in the presentations I provided, I've been clear where the positions are and where they are on the org chart.
Well, I don't mean to be directive of the police, but I mean, this is kind of, you know, last year we sat here to budget, they snuck a CID officer in, and then we changed it into a, I don't remember what's...
I don't know that snuck is the right word, but...
Well, it was mis, it was misallocated and nobody caught it, and then we turned it into, by the time we approved the budget or voted on the budget, it was the victim advocate. Then, tonight, we have an additional detective who we're now, we're finding out is patrol-ish, depending on how we're using him, but we've now added another CID officer, or at least another officer into the CID column, right? Meanwhile, you know, we went for months having a discussion about patrol officers in the city, and I still don't see them. We've had four, we have four vacancies now, so what's the actual number that we should have had in 2024? Just the number of patrol officers budgeted in 2024? What's that number?
Budgeted or actually in a patrol position?
You have 20 officers budgeted in patrol. We've had two officers who serve as the PIO in backup patrol and investigations. Both of those positions are pulled in patrol anytime we need to supplement them. We haven't been able to supplement them because they're vacant. So we haven't had those positions filled to supplement them.
Okay, so maybe we should stop this game of supplementation, and we should actually have patrol officers that patrol, and we know what that number is, and we have a PIO, Public Information Officer, that we know who that is, and that's a field, and then we actually have detectives that are detecting. Because here's what's happening, I feel like. Again, last year, I could go back and find the tape, I found a CID officer that just showed up in the spreadsheet one day. Now we're back to the same thing this, this year, it was six, now we're at seven, and now we're told it's a pseudo-patrol officer, whatever. We've just spent months to the, to the, to the degree of potentially ruining bonds with the school district...
Yep.
Discussing patrol, and now we're back to, eh, it's a very flexible number patrol. I, I don't really care. I just want to know the number of patrol officers assigned to patrol, they should always be on patrol, they should be on patrol, so that when nights we have an I-10 accident, we don't have anybody north of 78 or north of the railroad tracks. This is like, I feel like a game, and I think the game needs to stop. We need to know positions, they need to be in it. If you're a public information officer, congratulations if sometimes you mount up and go on patrol. But we need to know the number of patrol officers that are on and assigned to patrol.
And that's why the change, the change has been made this year to reflect that.
Mayor, council, I don't agree with the word snuck. Last year, we had a chart in which a number was mistyped in a position, and...
For months. Okay, fine, snuck, not snuck. You have a history of not providing all the information, so I'll call it snuck. I'll call it snuck, and you'll just say yes, okay? Maybe I disagree, but you did sneak, you have not always given information. And so here's the reality of it, we're back to it. Was there a seventh CID officer until today's package? Does anybody recall that?
Nope.
So, I don't know. Don't call it snuck, call it snuck. I'm just telling you, there hasn't been seven until tonight.
I got my...
There's not a seventh CID officer.
That's what the paper says.
Okay.
There may be seven FTEs, but they're not officers.
I don't know what the seven looks like in English. It's like a line and a line, right? That's what it says today, and it's the first time it's said that.
So one of those positions is a victim advocate, and they're not sworn. That is what council voted on when we brought that person in, it's a partly grant-funded position. That is not a patrol officer position. If you will go back and look, I would just ask council, if you'd please look at the organization chart that I provided, it's clear.
Chief, I don't mean to argue with you, last year it was five, and it went to six with the, with the victim advocate. Now it's six, gone to seven.
You weren't here, so, but, but he's, he's telling the truth there. I, my thing is, okay, we've got 20 allocated. We've got four positions are vacant, correct?
Sure.
And, but yet on this paper right here, it says 22. And you said those 22, the two extra ones are ones that are public information and CID. Well, I would say that since we've got four vacancies, they need to just go right back to patrol, be patrolling until we get them filled, and then once they're filled, then they can go and, and check out those other two areas. We have got to have people on patrol. I'm telling you, and I know that they've got a different budget than ours, I can go to shirts and I can see a police car, four or five of them. I come here into Siblo, and I can take crap shoot and, and see if I can see a police car out patrolling.
Okay.
So I've got a problem with that. Hey, listen, let's, let's bring the discussion back. I think, I think we're talking, you know, we're getting into the weeds and talking about, you know, what police officers are doing, and, you know, let's get focused back on the budget. I, I'd like to skip to what we need to vote on. I see that 6A has discussion action, but I don't really understand what the action is for A. To me, it probably should have been labeled as a discussion item. Let's move on to 6B, discussion action to set the date for the public hearing for the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget. Ms. Miranda.
Mayor, I understand where you're going with that, but we've got to, to make sure that what we're presented, I mean, we're the decision makers. But then it's not recorded, it's where my constituents see that I'm advocating for their tax dollars, mayor, that's what I'm trying to do.
The FTE schedule that's in the back of the book shows 52.4 personnel in police in fiscal year 24 and 57.7, which is an increase of 5.2, 5.3 related to, that decimal is related to...
Okay. So we need to set a date for the public hearing. What's the proposed date for the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget?
August 19th.
August 19th. Can I get a motion to set August 19th as the date?
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Mahoney, seconded by Councilwoman Cunningham. And, let's see, I don't think this is, yeah, I guess it is working, okay. Okay, all right. I don't even think I can, but it's weird. Okay, it's turning blue. There you go, okay. Are y'all good? Okay, all right. And then the next one is 6C, discussion action to set the maximum tax rate and set the date for the public hearing on the tax rate and subsequent adoption of the proposed 2024 financial year 2025 property tax rate. Mr. Reed.
Yes, Mayor, I'll let Anna Miranda handle this. During the break, we did work on what would the tax rate increase be above the voter approval rate if we remove the public works adjustment to compensation? And so I'll let her show you this slide. That informs your decision on what is the maximum tax rate you want to set for the notice of a public hearing.
It does have to be a record to vote. And so the, the proposed rate in the budget book you're looking at is 53.4 cents. The calculated rate, subtracting out the public works compensation, is 53.07 cents. So would, if council would like to set that as the maximum tax rate?
Say that again? 53.07, right?
53.07.
So 0.5307, right? Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion to set the tax rate at 53.07?
There's not required language, but it has to be a record.
This is setting the tax rate to go to the voters.
No, this is setting a maximum tax rate for which you will consider at a public hearing July 19th.
August 19th.
Sorry, August 19th. This is not the vote on the tax rate, but as part of the process to set a tax rate, you have to have a notice saying that you will be considering a tax rate for this fiscal year, and that notice has to include what that tax rate may be. Come August 19th, you may decide to go with a 47.69 tax rate. This is just to set the maximum tax rate for the public notice, and we've done this every year that I've been here. This year, because council at the July 30th budget workshop said, we're interested in pursuing, considering a tax rate above the voter approval rate, which is 47.69, to support public safety.
Okay, so with the three things that are going on the ballot, the public safety facility, the animal services facility, and then the staffing, this would be what the staffing increase would bring it to, would be the 53?
53.07, that's for...
Okay, so this is a public hearing?
Yes.
And then it will, then we're going to make a decision on, on August 19th to put it on the ballot?
Yes.
On August 19th, you, on August 19th, you will take action on the budget and the tax rate. And once coun, if council adopts a tax rate of 53.07, that automatically triggers the election. And there will be an ordinance following the vote on the tax rate to vote on the ordinance to, to call the election.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to make sure I understand this. So the 53, whatever, 53.40?
We put the math up on the screen behind you, sorry.
It's right here.
This is what we did during the break.
We're not going with 53.8. We're not going with this.
Because there may be adjustments to the public.
Because we made the adjustments. So we're going to go with this.
Dot 5307. Can I get a motion to, for the dot 5307?
As the maximum tax rate?
Yes. Is his motion sufficient?
Yes.
Audrey, okay.
The maximum tax rate is only 5307.
Okay, you said those words.
Again, this does not just give council free rein to approve a 537, it still has to go to the voters.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, and this is just approving it for a public hearing?
You will be asked to adopt that tax rate before it goes to the voters.
But just not today?
But not today, August 19th.
So if we adopt that tax rate before it goes to the voters, and the voters voted down, then we just default back to the voter approval rate?
47.69.
Yeah.
47.69.
Basically a penny more than we got today.
53.8.
So essentially, this is us saying...
4799.
This is what we do with the money if you approve it.
We're at 4699 right now?
Okay, then I'll second the motion for the public hearing.
And this vote will be part of the public hearing notice that goes in the paper.
I need you to, I need you to second the motion to set the tax rate at point, 0.5307, because that was the motion.
Do you want to make that motion, Katie? I know Councilman Mahoney said it, but you, you need the clarity of the words, right? As far as...
Yeah, I just need, he said it, I need her to second.
Okay, there we go.
Oh, but I don't want to set the tax rate. It just seems like...
That's what we have to do.
No, I know it's what we have to do, it just, it, the way it's worded and the way that it comes across is that we are making the decision that this is the tax rate we want, and we're not, we are not the final deciders, it goes to the voters. And I just don't feel like it's super clear. And that's my hesitation here. But I guess I'll second the motion to set the maximum tax rate at 5307, and set the date for the public hearing.
Well, the public hearing's already set, but that was in the previous motion, so we're good on that.
That was, that was a public hearing on the budget. So you're also setting a date for the public hearing on the tax rate.
And set the, and subsequent adoption pending voter approval.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Mahoney, seconded by Councilwoman Cunningham. Please vote on your screens.
So the public can't see it because you don't have the screen, so you would have to do a roll call.
It's on the screen right now, I see it, Peggy. Okay. A roll call, okay. So we'll start with Councilwoman Benson.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. But on the screen, it was... So, aye.
We did it with 43. Okay. That won't be sufficient for the next time, but it will be for next time.
To set the tax rate?
Yep.
And again, this is just setting the tax rate for the public hearing that then council will be able to approve or set in place to say, this is our tax rate for the ballot for people to vote on. So we are not making any kind of decision except that this is what the public can vote on. Right, this is what we're setting as the maximum rate for the public notices. Okay.
Yeah, for your public hearing on August nineteenth, for you to consider when you first adopt a budget and following adopting a budget, adopt a tax rate that supports that budget. If, again, you approve a, a tax rate above the voter approval rate of forty-seven point six nine, as Anna Miranda has mentioned, there's an ordinance on the agenda where you have to approve that ordinance so that you can call the special election on the tax rate that you just adopted, right? In your packet is the, is the notice that we fill out based upon your action tonight. And that will identify that this is just setting a maximum tax rate and that it is being considered on August nineteenth. So again, for crystal clarity, for anybody who watches this, city council did not just adopt a tax rate of point five three zero seven.
Right. Okay.
It allowed the city council to preserve the opportunity to consider such a tax rate at its meeting on August nineteenth, dependent on a budget and dependent on, and the action on a budget and dependent on its action to adopt the tax rate.
Okay, and?
And then dependent on voter approval.
Right.
Yeah. And then Mr. Reed and Ms. Miranda, and if you could get with the nay votes between now and the next meeting and make sure to clear up any, any questions that they have?
Yep.
You know, because based upon our, the way our last meeting went, you know, there shouldn't have been any nay votes, you know, because we were all in agreement at the last meeting. And I think there's, something has changed.
I would nay.
So I'm happy to meet with?
Maybe you were the only one, but I think?
I'm happy to meet with any council member.
But we need to figure out how to improve communication so that if I have a question, everybody else here has access to that. So if that is, that we present you the question, we can't respond to Mr. Reed. He just has to give us that answer so that we don't have like this walk-in quorum thing when we all get this information. But there was a lot of inconsistency in this budget. We'd had till nine o'clock that we had an opportunity to continue to, to discuss it. I really wanted to make sure that we were getting the public safety that we needed. In, in that, in that summary for firefighters, it went from fifteen to eighteen. It was completely clear. The, the increase was there. So if we're saying that we're going to increase taxes because we're adding this many patrols?
Yes.
And it doesn't reflect on this budget, like I have problems with that. I'm for, you know, letting us find a public safety completely. I want to make sure we have those funds allocated.
Absolutely.
If we have the opportunity to have other officers step up to patrol at any time, I feel like why, everyone's stretched pretty thin, right? You were saying there's some that can go out and patrol. I was asking for reserve officers. We couldn't even get that to go out and patrol, right? We're spread so thin. So I, when I, when I look at white and black on paper, I want to see that we're going to voters and here they can see, pull up the budget, there is the four officers and the extra traffic officer that we're adding on our tax rate. I would have also preferred to see, I don't know, all the tax laws, right? Um, my impression is, I, I was for the forty-seven sixty-nine. Let's move up the public safety with their, with their market value. But to go all the way, I felt like we could approve the forty-seven sixty-nine and then go to the voters for the remaining. This feels completely, wow, like I, I can't even put it into words.
I, I agree, because I think that's what we talked about last time, is by, by going up one penny and then, and then the rest was for the, the penny and a half for the animal shelter and the three cents for the public, um, safety facility. And so I, I think that that's what we were agreeing to last time. And I think that, you know, things have changed.
So council, at the budget workshop, you expressed support for the voter approval rate of forty-seven point six nine. You also expressed support to go above the voter approval rate to support public safety. In order to preserve your opportunity for that vote, the tax law requires that with adequate public notice following tonight in advance of August nineteenth, that you set a maximum tax rate that you will consider. So in all years past, you were never considering going above the voter approval rate. So last year, the voter approval rate, tax rate was forty-six point nine nine. On a meeting, in a meeting in August of last year, you did the exact roll call vote to set the maximum tax rate at forty-six point nine nine. We advertised that. We then came back to you in September, because it was not, it was not a condensed process, and you voted at that meeting in September and you approved the voter approval rate. You could have approved a lower tax rate. So we're following the same process. If tonight you only approved a maximum tax rate of forty-seven point six nine, you could not, on August nineteenth, or let's say it was in September, vote for a tax rate above what you advertised.
Correct.
And so you had to tonight, we had to create the budget that incorporated the funds for the tax rate for public safety. You had, you have to tonight, as you just did, make a motion to set the maximum tax rate at fifty-three point oh seven. You had to second it. You had to vote on it. If with that now will be advertised at fifty-three oh seven, the public knows you're considering that tax rate. And then we have a public hearing.
And then come and say, we don't want our taxes raised.
That's, that's right. That's the?
I would hope so.
That is the Texas law, and we, I am following the direction you gave.
I do, I, I'm sorry. I do agree. I thought that the increase to the voter approval rate was going to cover the market increase for police and fire and that the vote, what we were voting on or putting towards the public was public safety, animal shelter, and then new positions.
Eight, eight positions, correct.
So I, I said that the voter approval rate could not support moving police and fire to market. You have five hundred and ninety-two thousand, call it six hundred. All my slides show that those two departments moving to market is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I never said that the voter approval rate covered market. I never said that. I said maybe you could do it for a portion of the year, but that's just right kicking a can down the road, because if you do it for half the year, you're, you're fooling yourself, because the next year, you have to fully fund that seven hundred and fifty thousand. So I never said that the voter approval rate moved police, fire, and public works.
That makes sense. And then I just heard that it would be seven hundred and fifty-ish thousand dollars to do the market study. And the five cents or whatever it is that this is doing is almost two million dollars. So what is the other amount for? I'm sorry. I feel like I'm just like in a separate reality and misremembering or?
So there's a slide.
Tracy, please put the slideshow back up.
Five, five police officers was calculated to be approximately six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay. So it's the new staff, it's the five officers, the three firefighters, and then the adjustment comes out to that two million-ish.
So this is a slide that we've been showing since June eighteenth, the move to market at ninety-eight percent. I said seven hundred and fifty thousand. You add that up, it's slightly more than seven hundred and fifty thousand. The addition of new officers is what the increased tax rate is also covering.
Okay, thank you. That I understand.
So if I can go back to the other, so we, we're, we've got sixteen patrol officers, right, currently?
Eighteen patrol. You have twenty patrol officers total, right? You have eighteen that are assigned and patrols in two other positions that support.
So why does this page here say that there's twenty-two?
Because that's what the additional for.
So this may be a silly question, and I'm not sure.
No, because we're, we're, we're advocating, I mean, that says five more patrol officers.
And there's also one in, on, it's in traffic and it's a different division. So if you flip the page, it should be?
I get it. I, we, I have a lot of people ask, why are we so top-heavy? And, and we are. I'm just saying, chief, you can look at me crazy all you want, but when you got eighteen or twenty patrol officers and then you got twenty-five other officers, that's a, that's, that's, there's a difference.
And mayor, Mr. Hitts?
There's more, more people?
On, on July?
On other than there are patrol.
I, I want to be clear when we talk about this. You have to have supervision, right? So when you say top-heavy, I think I did a presentation to show the supervisors in the Ciblo Police Department.
But they're patrolling. You've got your sergeants out patrolling.
They're out there. That's part of their job.
Exactly.
So you have, you have seven patrol sergeants in the Ciblo Police Department. But when we're talking about patrol, we're talking about officers that are on the street, working the street. Uh, when we say top-heavy, we're the least leanest police department in the, in this region. We put that on slides and showed. Shirts has two sergeants per shift. We have other officers.
We don't have to go through your chart. I've seen your chart and I understand your chart. I, I understand it. But, but whenever I'm looking at it and you say we've got twenty, and understanding that twenty, you also have your sergeants are part of that twenty. I get it. Correct?
They're, they're not a part of that twenty. Sergeants are not a part of the twenty. That's your patrol officers that we're talking about. Sergeants are not, sergeants are not patrol officers. They're part of supervision. So the sergeants are, are seven additional, there are seven sergeants and three lieutenants. They're not counted in the patrol ranks. Neither am I.
Well, I wouldn't expect you to be part of the patrol ranks.
Yeah, so that's, but my point is, the supervisors are not counted though, sir. That's, when we say twenty, that's officer position, first line of employee positions.
Okay.
So I did have a, a question. I'm not sure how the fund, how you set up the funds in the system. But we know that some of those positions are vacant. We know that these new positions that we're creating are going to be vacant. Is there a way to separate out the variances in salary? Like if we have an unfilled position in police, keeping that to the side, um, so that it can be applied? Like even if we have to carry it over into the next year, if we have a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand that we can carry over to the next year to apply toward additional whatever we need in police, kind of self-fund it that way?
So you're saying, can we take the savings that we may accrue in one year from vacancy in the police department, and let's call that a hundred thousand dollars? And let's just say for this conversation, that covers a, one patrol officer for a whole year. Could you carry that forward into FY twenty-six? The answer is yes, but you're, you're mixing one-time savings with a reoccurring impact to the fund, and I don't recommend?
So I'm, I'm kind of tr, I'm trying to think ahead to next year too, because we have the ARPA funds running out and we have to be able to make up that difference. And so if we have these vacancies that we know we're going to have this year, we're budgeting for potentially five additional officers, plus the four vacancies at least that we have, plus the SRO vacant, whatever these vacancies are, we need to start thinking ahead to next year so that we're not going back to the voters and saying, sorry, guys, we screwed up. We used ARPA and it ran out. Now we have to figure out how to pay these officers.
We, we have calculated that into the tax rate that we're proposing to you and that we would, uh, in the next budget process show that we're absorbing the two hundred and fifty thousand. That's all we're using in FY twenty-five to provide funds to pay for the rates that we're paying police and fire right now. So in FY twenty-six, the first thing we do is we cover the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with new revenue in FY twenty-six. We are going to cover that. And we're fully on our own. I've used the analogy of you're a parent, you tell your kids, time for an apartment. You tell them, I'm going to pay full rent the first quarter, seventy-five percent of your rent the second quarter, so forth, until you get to twenty-five percent that last quarter. And then you say, hey, bucko, come January next year, you're paying your whole rent. We have weaned ourselves off of ARPA each and every year successfully. And all I'm trying to drive home here, Ms. Cunningham, is we've already calculated that for FY twenty-six.
Okay.
You, you've asked us, your professional staff, to work through this, this proposed idea to go to our voters and ask them to approve a public safety tax increase that will add five, five, five police officers, which four patrol, one is traffic, and three firefighters, and move all police and fire to market competitive pay, because we have shown you slides that shirts, seguin, New Braunfels, and other cities have moved ahead of us. We were doing just fine until they made a dramatic move. And the only way the general fund can support that is if you ask the voters to approve a public safety tax increase.
Or get some more businesses in here to Ciblo.
One hundred percent. And I think you've been seeing business after business opening.
Because we, we've had, what, seven businesses per month open? Wha, wha, what did Kelsey say to, to me last week?
It's something around that order. And, and August thirteenth, you'll have an executive session with an economic development update and you'll see the activity that we're doing there. We, we, again, are less staff per capita, that's one thousand residents, than any city around us. And from police to fire, to the city secretary, to finance, we are doing more with less. And we are very proud of the services that we deliver and the quality that we deliver to this community. So there's not a scenario where under your voter approval tax rate, you can add police officers or firefighters, given our current level of service. And remember, we don't cover every service that other cities do. We don't provide a public library, right? We don't. We do not have a public pool. We don't. What we do have are these basic services we provide. And currently in FY twenty-four, let's not even talk about FY twenty-five, for every dollar of revenue that comes into the general fund in FY twenty-four, fifty-one cents goes directly to supporting our men and women who protect us. Every half dollar goes there. Everything else goes to supporting what else is in the general fund. It's a, it's a very lean budget. The staff that works for you, that works for our constituents and our businesses, they're proud each and every day that they get the opportunity to serve this community. And we recognize that we're a lean staff. That doesn't deter us from having our heads up high, being proud to be on team Ciblo, and to come to work with positive attitudes and professional demeanor so that when we interact with the public, we're the face of the city when they're interacting with us.
Any other questions from council?
I do have one. Speaking on economic development, um, and just looking through the budget, I noticed, I, I don't know how we go about doing this. I just want to kind of approach council. RKG had mentioned having a separate EDC director.
But that's not on the agenda. I'm, we can't, we can't?
We're talking budget, exactly. So I want council to consider and think about being that we're so fifty, we're fifty-three percent residential, right, with property taxes. We're contending, contending, you know, with asking voters to increase our taxes. We're at twenty-two percent with sales tax. Uh, if y'all are in favor of hiring an EDC director, not to say that Kelsey's not doing, you know, she's doing two jobs. She's running herself then. Grateful for what's come in. However, we do need to have an EDC director who can just spearhead just the EDC department and attract some businesses so we can go ahead and get more sales tax coming into our city.
So presently, your ED director and has been since I've been here and before I, I'm here, is funded from the general fund. When I started, there was an ED director and one person. So when I moved Kelsey to be a department head of two departments, I took a position in planning and I put it in ED because I knew that we needed more resources. So you have two positions in ED and the director who's over planning and economic development. If you want to add another director position and you want to fund that from the general fund, then I'll go back to the voter approval rate. You have five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars to do something with. You'll lead up more than one quarter of that money to recruit an economic development director. That's completely within your purview. But again, that current tax rate, given all the information that we've shared with you.
I think it just is, it's concerning that we're talking about putting more burden on property taxpayers, homeowners who, we, we've been given all this stuff tonight. Oh, forty-five, forty-six percent of our population has a disabled veterans exemption of some kind. Then we have additional people who don't pay the full property tax because of other exemptions. So we're talking about probably less than fifty percent of our property taxpayers are paying the full property tax amount that's supporting fifty-three percent of the general fund. And that's, I know some of the veterans and some of the people with the frozen taxes, they are contributing. But we're talking about increasing the rate five cents and then increasing it for the animal services, which is needed, which, and the public safety facility, which is needed, and the new officers and the market pay for police, fire, which is needed, the water bill, which is needed. All these things are needed, but it's all falling on the shoulders of our home, our property owners. Um, and I think it's really disingenuous if we're like, oh yeah, there's a problem. We need to increase sales tax. And then we don't put any effort or any funding into that. We just did this strategic, we're fine, Mark. We don't have to vote on anything. Um, we have the, uh, now you threw me off. We have the, the property tax that keeps increasing, but we're not doing anything to try to increase the amount of sales tax that comes in and that just it, to offset it. So we can say, yeah, we need more sales tax. Yeah, the sales tax is not where we thought it was going to be. Yeah, we have businesses coming in. Well, those businesses are not keeping up with the amount of money that we need to survive. So what are we doing to increase the amount of businesses? The strategic plan is a great start, but it's not the end-all be-all. We're going to continue running into this problem as we have more and more developments come in and more and more roads that fall into disrepair and more, more public safety is needed. All of this, we cannot? Because we were always under the impression, as long as there was no other motion on the table, that we could have discussion after the time of the meeting.
We have to end the meeting by the time listed on the agenda.
We have to end the meeting by nine, and it's nine oh one.
So we have to stop.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I mean, by all means, you have to stay here and talk.